Red but the red light on if you're going to speak and also try to remember that it's a hot mic if it's left on. Uh, the invocation tonight will be given by Commissioner Rogers, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Mason, please stand.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna sit while I pray, just so I, cause I've got something I wanna read, if that's okay.
That'd be fine, sir.
I was gonna make some of these comments during my committees and district reports, but there's not a better time than I think right now during this prayer. Uh, today, as we've seen on the news, another school shooting happened in America and it happened here in Tennessee. The shooting took place at a private Christian school in Nashville. I don't wish to talk about school violence, gun riots, and I'll leave that for the politician in Washington to talk about, but I just wanna say about, as a father. As a father of three little girls, one who is getting ready to celebrate her ninth birthday next week, the same age as the three students who are no longer with us, it's tough. It's really tough to think about. You know, you take your kids to school, you drop them off, or you take them to the bus stop, and as a father, you just pray for them every single day. You pray that they learn a lot, you pray that they treat others with respect, and for some of us parents, you pray that they don't get in troubles with their teachers, and you pray for their safety. And I'm thankful that our sheriff's department and other local agencies prepare for this throughout the year. And I'll just say it bluntly, I think it's a shame that they have to prepare for something like this just because of the world we live in today. I just ask that we all pray for those families tonight. We pray for the families of the teachers who also lost their lives to this senseless tragedy. It never gets any easier. Mr. Chairman, I just ask if we could, take a moment of silence, and we think, and we pray for the victims, pray for the families of the six that we lost today. If you guys would, please take a moment of silence with me. Father, we come to you tonight, and we just pray for these families. We pray for understanding, we pray for peace, we pray for wisdom during this time of tragedy. Lord, we know that it says in your word that you are all-knowing, and you are the provider of this life that we have. We are thankful that we are able to call you father. God, we pray tonight for this meeting, we pray for the people who are here, we pray for the people of this county, we pray for the students of this county. Lord, we love you, we thank you for all the blessings that you give us, and we are humbled and we are honored to be able to serve you. And it is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, that's very well stated. Uh, next on the agenda is a report from the county mayor, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. A couple of things that shouldn't take but a minute. First of all, your septic repair program update, a hundred and forty-nine properties in process, eight sewer hookups, forty-eight permits have been issued, forty signed contracts and construction ongoing, and eight projects have been completed. So, again, the septic repair program is moving along just fine. You have copies of a resolution that I would respectfully ask someone put on the agenda for next week, is, and this is to authorize me to, um, sign a new contract with Polk County to provide, um, uh, probation services for Polk County. Uh, we've been doing that for the last several years, and it's time to renew the contract.
Commissioner Slater will put it on the agenda.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I hesitate on this next one because from what I've heard this evening, I'm opening a can of worms, but I'm only gonna report on what I know about. Um, you got a letter telling you the latest on the tire issue after lots of negotiating and convincing them to do the, uh, their due diligence with the, um, analysis like they were really supposed to have done, uh, originally. Um, according to the letter that you all got a copy of, uh, they have come back with a tire price of a dollar thirty-five each. The last time an analysis was done, was done by Centec about ten years ago, and it came out a dollar twenty-five. So, I would have to assume that ten years later, that ten cent increase is probably justified, but the analysis is on the letter that you all got. So, uh, finally, hopefully that issue is resolved, you know, they went way up, they came back down guessing at it, and now they're coming back down even further to a dollar thirty-five a tire, and, uh, five dollars, I think continuing five dollars for large tires. So, uh, since I've gotten here this evening, I've had the issue about going down there and being told that you have to buy a vest and a helmet. We talked to them about that last week, and I confirmed again this evening. I don't know where the miscommunication on their part is, but anyway, the policy is when you go to the landfill, driving your own truck, go to the landfill, you do have to have a hard hat and a vest before entering the landfill now. And, uh, but if you get there and you don't have one, they have five or six there in the office to let you use to go up there. Now, they're supposed to tell you that we have six of them, but all of them are already up there, you'll have to wait till somebody comes down and get that one, you know, you may have to do some trading out, but that's how it's supposed to be working. I know we got a report a while ago that someone had gone, I guess today, and they were told, all, the only thing they were told is they have to buy the helmet and vest, but they are supposed to be offered to buy a helmet and vest, but they're also supposed to be offered one if you want to use it to go up there and come back. So, I just texted him, and he verified that policy, and I said, "Well, you're miscommunicating somewhere because that's not what somebody was told today." So, I've passed that on to him, and hopefully that'll get worked out. Um, I believe that's the only thing I have to report. Does anyone have a question for me? Yes, sir.
Did I understand you'd say that they would loan them a hard hat and vest?
Yes, they, they have said, and the text five minutes ago confirmed that, that they will loan you one, they're supposed to say, "We will loan you one to go do your job, and then when you come back out, you'll cross the scales and give it back to us." With the understanding, they could all be on loan when you get there, and you have to wait a few minutes till one comes back down, but you don't, they shouldn't be told you have to buy one. Does that make sense?
They didn't say that today, they said, they said that you have to, they had the option, didn't have an option, they had to buy one for twenty-five dollars.
I know, I, that, I shared that with him, and he's checking on it, but that was, that's not their policy, I don't know, it's a miscommunication on their part somewhere, I don't know what else to say.
Well, I won't let, I won't let this over the loudspeaker then, since you already said what you did there, because I had a customer today that went through that, and he did say that, uh, that they wouldn't let him in because of that.
But we'll follow up tomorrow or so and make sure, but I told him, I said, "I have a constituent right here telling us a different story as we speak," and he confirmed, he said, "I just checked with a, uh, landfill manager," and he confirmed that that is their policy, but obviously they hadn't shared that policy with an employee.
Anyone else?
Any other questions? If not, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, reports from committees and/or districts. We will start, well, on the right, with Commissioner Beatty, please.
Everything looked pretty good in the first district.
Thank you. Uh, next is Commissioner Alford.
Second district's doing well. I do have one announcement, though, on a committee district report. Uh, Mr. Chairman, each of you having a copy of a resolution appointing members of the Brian K. Smith Workhouse and the Work Release Commission. Stapled to this resolution is a fiscal note which indicates there is no budgetary impact on this resolution. I would like to place this in the form of a motion for vote on next, uh, April third.
Done. Anything else, sir?
No, sir, that's it, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you may recall, we voted recently to allocate five hundred thousand of art money to the road department to install stripes and reflectors on our roadways. Um, for housekeeping purposes, we need to approve a resolution appropriating these funds. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to place on the April third voting session agenda a resolution appropriating five hundred thousand dollars to the Bradley County Road Department for road safety improvements as allowed by the conditions and terms of the American Rescue Plan Act from the funds allocated by Resolution twenty-two dash seven-six for COVID response for governmental services. Please note, there is no fiscal note attached per our policy, a fiscal note is not required for art funding. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, the road department could be funding pretty well here down the road. Commissioner Rogers.
Mr. Chairman, I had a constituent ask a question about this particular resolution after we voted on a few weeks ago. Do you know, Commissioner Blake, how many miles that five hundred thousand would allow the road department to stripe and, uh, and to put reflectors on?
Commissioner, I, I do not know the actual mileage. When I talked to the road superintendent Collins, he said it would make a, I think, what'd he say, a pretty good dent, but that doesn't answer your question, but, uh, we'll get that answered, cause it'd be, it'd be good to know.
Yeah, I just, I had some people asking, cause out in, not in my district, but in other districts, that, very hard to see late at night, and especially with those road reflectors on some of these old, old tiny, small roads, it's very difficult to see, and people are asking if their road's gonna be done, so I didn't know if there would be any idea.
I've been told by Tom Collins that basically it runs five hundred dollars per mile per stripe, so you've got four stripes, that's two thousand dollars per mile. That, that was a rough guess on Tom Collins' part. Uh, Commissioner Thompson.
I talked to him today, it'd be enough to do it all. I think he's about eight to nine hundred miles of road, so it'd be, be enough to do it all. Reflectors in some places and strip, strapping in others.
The reflectors wasn't very expensive, it's the, the striping that, cause he outsources that to, uh, another company to do that. Commissioner Rogers, uh, I suspect that the road department will be at the budget hearing on April fourteenth, and that'll be one of the things we cover.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake.
Anything else on that? This is gonna be great for the county. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Collins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, all is well on the third. I do wanna extend condolences to, uh, former Commissioner Dennis Epperson, I believe, uh, he lost his mother, uh, this last week, and did not get to serve with Commissioner Epperson, but I know he served this body well, and so I wanna extend condolences to him and his family.
Thank you, keep his father in prayer, he's on up in the years also. Uh, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, uh, we, and, uh, opportunity of celebrating the Bear Ets winning, I saw that on video, uh, would've been here, but I was celebrating fifty-three years of marriage, and that was a higher priority even than that. So, I had a great time, and I appreciate being away. Um, fifty, uh, sixty highway is moving on, uh, there, I've had conversations with T-Dot regarding, uh, from Cleveland Middle School, what's going to be happening in the near future, and we're being told that from there to probably, uh, a midpoint between us and, uh, the, uh, Paul Huff Parkway that comes in, we should be having a electrical work that's gonna be done, and power lines moving underground, and once they get to a wall at, uh, one of the main roads, uh, then, uh, they will be able to start doing some of the subdivisions, particularly ours and others that need to be worked on. But we've had really good response from T-Dot and staff that's worked with, all we've had to do was basically make a call or two, and they're very responsive. Uh, you know, this, uh, covenant situation, really appreciate the prayer by my colleague from Seventh District today. Um, we should be praying, uh, for those families, uh, but also that principal, uh, those teachers that, uh, have had to live this horror of today, and what they have had to do. Touches home here when you realize that one of our coaches at Cleveland State, I mean, at Lee University, his wife has a dear friend that's in Nashville. Uh, her daughter was killed today, one of the three. And, uh, and that, uh, daughter's daddy was the principal, so, and this lady's husband. So, it comes really close home when you have family, people you know in this community that have family there, that are really touched by this. And we are very honored here in a county that's had, uh, uh, first responders with our, uh, officers in our schools since, uh, my time as assistant principal, uh, all the way through to now. To have, uh, not only armed guards there as our SROs, but men and women that actually teach in the school, are very much a part of the school, and do, uh, some real mentoring that go on there. But, uh, we should remember those people that are touched by not only just the death of those precious children, we all have nine-year-olds. Uh, my twins are now ten, uh, and moving on toward middle school, and I, I know the anguish to a point, just that we feel from a distance what it would be like for those individuals there. So, uh, that principal of that school, uh, is suffering today, a heartbreak that really, I don't think any of us could really imagine what he's having to go through. So, let's remember those in prayer as they continue through the time. We're, we're fortunate to live in Bradley County, where we've had SROs here for over twenty-plus years, an SRO in each school. An SRO is, that's a parent that's dedicated to standing, to take a bullet if he needs to for our children, and we're fortunate to have that here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. To add a little bit to that, we have three SROs at each high school in the county, gate guard and two inside, so we, we're trying. Commissioner Gilbert.
I'd like to thank all the people in the fourth district that are patient when they asked us to see about getting stuff done, that are very patient with us, and we are working on getting stuff done for you. Um, I went to Bradley High School's celebration, uh, basketball team Friday, and it was the highlight of my week. I hadn't been in that gym and salon and felt that feeling, it was amazing. Uh, Principal Patrick Spangler, I wanna commend you on the job that you're doing, that gym looks better than it did when I was there. I mean, they are good stewards of our properties, it was just, it really was exciting for me, that's my armada. And so, I've got a young man, his name is Amos Blazer, and he would like to, uh, speak to us commissioners. Let me step up.
Yeah, that's fine. Pull that mic down there, sir, so, there you go.
Mr. Amos Blazer.
Make sure it's working.
Hello, my name is Amos Blazer, and I am a first-class scout with Boy Scout Troop One-O-One. I would like to talk to you briefly about a safety issue that affects us all. Safety in school zones must be given priority. This applies to stripe, the striping of roads, there are roads that are not striped in Bradley County, specifically in front of Hayther and Oak Grove Elementary School. This is a safety issue for children and adults alike. This can cause confusion because people don't know which way to go, and automobile, automobiles lack direction. What can our community do to help alleviate this problem and improve safety in Bradley County? I know if we work together, we can find a positive solution that benefits everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very well, very well said.
So, Amos, have you, as you have heard tonight, they are allocating money to stripe the roads, to make them safer. So, the things that you've done, and the processes that you've been through have paid off, you've done your job. So, um, I just wanna thank you for coming out and speaking to us, it takes a lot of courage, and I encourage all the kids to come out if they need to speak. So, you're, find your commissioner and talk to them, tell them that you'd like to speak. So, I thank you so much for coming. His papa was one of my best customers, every Saturday he came in, and he wasn't just a customer, he was family, his name's Hank Smith. His boy's a fireman, he's Hank Junior, so, um, very, very much missed. That's all.
Commissioner Blake, do you have a comment?
Uh, well, I echo what, uh, was just said, um, in part of your well-spoken speech, you said, "If we work together, we can get a lot of things done," and that's exactly what happened. I can tell you, we started working on this about two months ago, when I first met with, uh, road superintendent, Tom Collins, and I approached him with the idea, um, and we had a pretty good productive meeting, I learned a lot about how that all works, and, um, I approached him with basically just striping, that was the only thing I knew, and then he brought up reflectors as well, so we put that in there as well, working with the mayor. I contacted him and asked him, uh, his thoughts, he agreed with it, I thought it was a good, uh, allocation and an investment. We do the implementation piece of it, you know, like he, the mayor said a couple of weeks ago, the timing of this, uh, you don't wanna stripe a road and then come in and pave it and have to stripe it again, all that kinda stuff will be handled as well, but our part is the funding piece. So, this commission next week will basically invest half million dollars into it, and the state's gonna come in with a three and a half million as well, so, thank you for your time, I really do appreciate that, young man, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, and I have been remiss here in not recognizing the chamber president, Mike Griffith, we always are thrilled to have you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Thompson.
Okay, Amos, I wanna thank you for being here also, I appreciate what you do. Uh, I wanna add to what, uh, Commissioner Rogers said, and Commissioner Winters said, "I have a daughter-in-law that teaches here in Bradley County, and I have a granddaughter that teaches in Williamson County, and I have several grandkids in school, not only here, but in Williamson County." And I just wanna, I think about them every day, every time I hear one of these tragic things happening, why, I think of my granddaughters, and I think of my kids, you know, it's what, uh, what might happen to them, so, we need to keep all that in our prayers, and maybe the good Lord will change that thing around one of these days. Um, another thing is, uh, I was down at the, uh, Inman Street Fire Department today, and, uh, uh, we had a meeting down there before the landing building, and, uh, the south wall, I believe it is, uh, is on the top end, is, uh, part of the brick is falling out, caving in there, so we're gonna have to do something about it, repair the building. So, I asked them to get a contractor in, and so every contractor they'd call, where they want an engineer to give their, I guess, put their specs on it first before they make a decision on what needs to be done. So, I called, uh, the road commissioner today, he does have an engineer, and I, I met him at the Inman Street Fire Department, and I asked him, uh, and, and of course, he went over it with me and said that he wasn't that type of engineer, he couldn't sign off on it, but he had some friends that were, that were in engineering, so, I'd just like to, some way, we gotta find a way to pay the engineer, I guess. So, if we're gonna get that done, well, we're gonna have to hire an engineer to even get a contractor to come in and look at it, so, I'm gonna leave that on the table for right now, unless they're got a way, uh, of what we, what direction we wanna go there, and, uh, and the mayor may wanna speak something on that. I might put you on.
That's all right, uh, Commissioner, um, as you all know, we've been having discussions with the city for some time now, and those discussions have gone very slowly, to say the least. Uh, actually, just today, I got a text that he was ready to make a proposal and would get with me tomorrow, so I'm still hopeful that something will work out there, not that we're wanting to move, but wanting to be cooperative with what the city's trying to do with their revitalization. Our position, my position on behalf of the county, I think you all will agree, is that we're okay with moving as long as there's no cost to the Bradley County Fire Department. We don't have the money to invest in a new building, we're happy where we're at, even if we have to fix a wall, but we would move if, if a swap occurred, or if, or if money was provided to, to build somewhere else. Uh, those are still going on, maybe I'll know something in the next few days, and if not, then we can back up and do what you're talking about if you want to, but I'm still hopeful that something will work out there.
Okay, that, that'll be fine, we'll, we'll stay on top of that and make sure that it doesn't, uh, it, it getting, it doesn't get worse, I guess, you know, so, we wanna watch, make sure nobody gets hurt on that, so, we'll keep that on, uh, we'll keep that on, uh, on our minds, as, uh, we go along with the city here, and, uh, and the mayor does his part, so, appreciate you, mayor.
That it? Thank you, Commissioner Goins.
Fifth district's doing good, but I was gonna say, I was driving down APD forty over by Planet Fitness, and I seen a big sign where they're gonna be paving a section that road, giving everybody like a month's notice, but you got Wildwood Avenue over there, that when you drive down it, I mean, it, it would, if you had a loose headlight, it would draw the headlight out of it, between, uh, Ninth Street, Fifteenth, and it's been like that for probably, like, at least eight years. And I was gonna ask Lori to find out when the, uh, that, when's that road scheduled to be repaved, uh, over there, a portion of it, I know they've, I know they're on a schedule to repave, but there's a section of APD, APD forty that don't need to be, to me, that's a waste of money, and, uh, but if you would do that for me, I'd appreciate it, that's all I have, thanks.
I believe APD forty is a state road, if I'm not mistaken. Wildwood is a state road? Yeah, I'm sorry. Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, I think sixty-four was tore up before Wildwood, the city tore Wildwood up.
It's not Wildwood, it's for the utilities company to come in there and butcher them up.
So, hopefully sixty-four's on the budget for this year.
Anything else, Commissioner Goins? All right, Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About a year or so ago, year and a half ago, we spent one Saturday, cold, cold morning, cleaning up over two hundred tires on the backside of Fort Hill, of Hillcrest Cemetery. Well, that's become a tire dumping ground again. So, the backside of Hillcrest Cemetery has probably, I don't know, fifty or sixty tires dumped on it. The illegal dumping of tires is getting worse and worse, and until somebody start, decides that they're gonna start arresting people and putting some teeth into that, we're fighting a losing battle for cleaning up tires. And I don't know, Commissioner Blake, if you wanna add anything to that or not, but, I, we go and clean up sites, and two weeks later, there's tires back again.
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I had a little bit on that, I saw that same report, um, and I think there's another one right on the Polk County line, just FYI for everybody is, um, it's some private property, so we can't use any, so, um, we have, uh, Keep America Beautiful and some other agencies working in with volunteers on that, but I've, uh, asked them to put in the requirement that a police report is filed, um, and we've been doing that all along, just so you know, with exit twenty and all the other places, so, um, a, a police report has to be filed with the, the law enforcement, whether the city or the county, and they have done that, from what I understand. Um, I met with, uh, Joe Pfeiffer the other day, and had a phone conversation with Sheriff Lawson. Keep America Beautiful, I'll speak, um, them, cause I'm on their board as well, is going to put up, uh, a thousand dollars. Um, uh, got the idea when I saw on Channel Three the Crime Stopper thing, I mean, and I thought, well, um, maybe, just maybe, somebody will, uh, help us out with who's doing all of this, and it'll go something like, you know, if, if somebody will give information that leads to the arrest of, of people who are doing this, then it's worth a thousand dollars, and Keep America Beautiful is gonna fund that as well, as I think some of the city as well. So, hopefully, we can do that, but a police report is filed before we put any effort into cleaning it up. Um, and it is frustrating, and I'll, in capital letters, frustrating, that you go out there, you spend a very, very cold morning, it was really cold that morning, Mr. Slater, and, uh, three, four, five months later, they're right back. Um, Sixth Street in Euclid is an example of that and some other places, so, uh, as the mayor's pointed out in years past, this has been an ongoing issue, and I've talked to, uh, Henry, uh, the T-Doc gentleman, I forget his name, I'm horrible with names, uh, Henry Can, thank you, thank you. Uh, other counties have got the same issue. We need, uh, we've asked a lot of help from our representatives up in Nashville on a number of different, uh, things. Um, I think this is something we need to add onto our list that, cause other county, Ray County's got eight thousand tires from us, and, and eighteen-wheelers up there. Um, so, uh, I did have a meeting with, uh, a gentleman out of Shelby County, they are doing, it was, uh, it was a Zoom call, um, they've got a new program of recycling tires that they're stripping the metal out and all that kinda stuff. Um, if it made sense, we'll look and see if it can come here in Bradley County, but all that to say, Commissioner Slater, I agree with you, it is frustrating, um, to have this happen, but we're doing everything we can, hopefully this thousand-dollar reward will help, uh, us get somebody in some handcuffs, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gilbert.
So, I was coming down the bypass from Chattanooga, I went to Sam's and was coming back, and just as I was getting off the exit, there was this little white Dodge truck, blowed by me, and had the whole truck bed full of tires. And just as I was getting off the exit, there was this little white Dodge truck, blowed by me and had the whole truck bed full of tires. And I thought, I wonder what he's doing with them tires. So I followed him. And he went to a tire store. And, uh, it's, I don't know if the tire store even has a name, brand, a name to it. But he went to this tire store and I don't know what them folks ain't selling used tires to them and then taking the ones from them and dumping them. So that is something that has to be really looked into. And I, so if they're coming from out of town, I believe that's where they're coming.
I've heard that same thing.
So do they, you know, they charge, uh, so much a tire, right? When you buy new tires, swap tires out.
Yeah, I, I paid it the other day, yeah.
Commissioner Thompson.
We did that, Commissioner. We, uh, it used to be a misdemeanor. When I first heard about this about a year or two ago, it was a misdemeanor. It was treated just like throwing a Chick-fil-A cup out your window. Throw tires out there or throw a Chick-fil-A cup as far as the law was concerned or the district attorney, it was exactly the same, fifty dollar fine. And from a point of view of money, I'll pay fifty dollars to a court and then make four hundred all day long. Now, as of, I think, July of last year, elect or, uh, it is a felony and they've got all those classes. I think it's a classy or something like that, uh, which allows law enforcement, Commissioner Mason can add to it. Uh, allows them to go after them a little bit more aggressively, I believe. Um, but it is a felony now. I don't know what to tell you on that.
Mr. Chairman, could we add that to an agenda for our legislative committee? Be glad to work on the offer.
Maybe we need to yank our elected officials up in Nashville for some help here. Do you have anything else, sir? All right, Commissioner Slater, you have anything else? Gosh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, just to, for clarification, Commissioner Slater, is it actually inside Hillcrest or is it on an adjacent, is it on the Hillcrest property or is it?
It'll be on the backside. It's, you go up, turn your lights off, go on top of Hill after dark. You have a tree line there on the left. You just roll them in the trees. That is owned by Hillcrest.
My grandmother's buried there. A lot of my family is. So, um, Commissioner Blake, get with me after this and we'll see if we can add some more money to that reward for donating.
You have anything else, Commissioner Slater? Okay, Commissioner Mason.
Things good in the sixth. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Ledford.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd just like to say, uh, I welcome Dwayne Blue here. He's going to be talking to us here just in a moment, uh, about the Relay for Life. And, uh, believe it or not, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything other than to ask Mr. Blazer. You said Oak Grove and Taylor, is that correct? Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask if we could, uh, speak with the Road Department Committee, the Road Committee, and see if we couldn't ask if those could be the first two roads by those schools to be looked at, uh, in honor of Mr. Blazer and him coming here and speaking with us tonight. See when they can maybe get that on that timeline.
Commissioner Mason, can you put that on the agenda and also ask if Tom can put a priority on for all schools? That, that be looked at first and we, especially on the backside of Lake Forest Middle School. It's a, I hate to say it, most of them are mothers taking their kids to school. It's like a drag strip down through there. They're running late. If we could do that.
Mr. Chairman, and if we could, on that, just for a little more, Mr. Commissioner Mason, if you could get a timeline on that, when, when they would do those schools. I would love it if, uh, Commissioner Gilbert and, uh, Commissioner Thompson and everyone else here would be there with Mr. Blazer the day they start paving those roads. Maybe he could be out there and help him paint the first stripe.
Be great to give the young man a photo op on that. That'd be something to hang. Uh, Commissioner Mason, you're still on, sir? That's it? No, I'm already on. Commissioner Ledford, you, you through, sir? Commissioner, okay. All right, agenda items next. Agenda item A, Commissioner Tommy Ledford.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, Dwayne Blue is here. He's going to talk to us about the, uh, American Cancer Society's Relay for Life.
Thank you, Commissioner Ledford. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, thank you all for allowing me a few minutes. I'll be brief tonight. Do you mind if I bring you some flyers to look at and pass out? Again, thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight to speak about, uh, something that's near and dear to my heart and to a lot of people in Cleveland and Bradley County. That's the American Cancer Society. Uh, I'm not going to talk about cancer specifically tonight because, uh, what I've discovered through many years is it's a topic, um, that most of us tragically know far too much about. Uh, but what I'm here to talk about tonight is the good news related to cancer. Uh, we're making great strides nationally because of work that's completed by researchers and doctors and nurses and others across this great country. And the American Cancer Society is the forefront of that research. I'm simply a volunteer. That's all I am. But this year, I'm again serving as the chairperson. And if you're wondering, I'm also the ringmaster because this year's Relay for Life, right here in downtown Cleveland, is a Relay for Life Carnival and Family Festival. And what we're trying to do quite simply is raise money to advance research, support survivors and encourage caregivers. It's really that simple. So what we're going to do is have a big event downtown and, and I've told this to other groups that I've spoken to. For many years, we considered the courthouse and the property around it sort of our home place, if you will. Because we had, back in the day, many of you may remember this, we had twenty-four hour relays. Volunteers would show up and they would work the day. They would stay all night and we would adjourn the next morning. This one's not quite that long. We'll close the city streets at noon that day. The teams will come in and set up their campsites around the courthouse. Uh, we'll open at three. The official opening is at five PM that day. Mayor Davis, Mayor Brooks will open the, uh, offer the opening words. State Representative Dan Howell is going to offer our opening prayer. We have a Boy Scout troop. We have, uh, the singing of the National Anthem. We're doing at least two things this year that are for the first time in our relay and perhaps in other relays. Number one, we're having a choir that's going to sing. It's probably going to be around five twenty-five or five thirty. Exclusive, exclusively made up of cancer survivors. First time it's ever been done. So one thing I would ask of you, if, if you know a cancer survivor, on that flyer that I passed out, there's a phone number and there's a website. They can call that phone number. They can go to that website. They can get registered. Does it cost them any money? If they register far enough in advance, about four weeks of the relay on April twenty-ninth, ACS will mail them a T-shirt. On relay day, we'll have a special tent set up for them. They can register that day. If they show up before five PM, we'll get them registered that day. At the end of their opening march, we always open the relay with the survivors taking the first parade march this year. We will present them with a medallion recognizing them as a survivor. Following that, we have a caregiver lap and then we introduce all the teams. Now, we're doing something else for the first time this year. And this is where Commissioner Tommy Ledford stood up to take note and to help fight cancer. We are having the first ever Mayfield Dairy American Cancer Society Ice Cream Sandwich Eating Contest. That's right. At six thirty that day, right here on the courthouse plaza, we started out, we were hoping we could get ten people to raise five hundred dollars each to fight cancer. We didn't get ten. Anybody want to guess how many we got? As of today, brothers and sisters, we have twenty people. Each one of them is going to raise at least five hundred dollars. Now, some of these folks are raising more than that. Tommy Ledford, I've known Tommy for a long time. We worked together back in the day at Bradley Hospital. He's a good man and a friend of mine. He's the second person I went to. And as soon as I asked the question and didn't get it out of my mouth entirely, he said, I'm in. That's the kind of people that I'm proud, I'm proud to call this place my home. I didn't grow up here, but I'm proud to call it my home. That's the kind of folks we have in this town. So we're going to fight cancer by eating ice cream. I hope you'll be there. Let me tell you two quick things about it. Number one, Scotty Mayfield's going to be with us. He's coming down. They're donating all the ice cream. Let me tell you, number two, though, if you ever want to see Tommy Ledford in an embarrassing situation, there will be no napkins, there will be no towels, there will be no handy wipes on that table. So you'll see all kinds of pictures with the grit and grime of ice cream sandwiches on that man's face. And Kevin Brooks and Tom Cassidy and City Schools Director, uh, Dr. Dyer and a whole bunch of other folks that you know. So I hope you'll come down and support us. We've got the Dexter Thomas Band at eight o'clock that night. We've got an auction that night with about ten, twelve thousand dollars worth of things. Here's one thing you can really help us with. We also have, how many of you have been to a relay before and participated in the Luminary Service? You might know what that is? That's when we have the, the white paper sacks. This year, we also have lanterns. Split them into two categories. For me, it's in memory of my mom. It's in memory of my dad. We put sand, we put a light, we put them on the track. At night you walk around. But we also do this. We do an honor of. I've got a cousin right now in the throes of fighting cancer. Candy Jones, she lives in Kentucky. This is personal to me, folks. She's going to be on the in honor of bag that I'm going to sponsor. I bet you got folks in your life too. Nancy's sitting right here. She's our chairperson of the Luminary. We could help you. We, we could use your help if you'll help promote that. Last thing I want to say is this. If you can't do anything at all for us this year, I'd ask you to do this thing. Pray for us. Encourage a survivor that's in your life somewhere. Encourage them to be strong. Encourage them to continue the battle. And the last one, if you know a caregiver, you know what they're going through. Put your arm around them, give them encouragement, give them a smile. If you don't do anything else, I'd ask you to do those, these three things. Thank you very much for your time tonight. If you have any questions, I'll answer those, but otherwise I'm going to let you conclude your business.
Hey, Dwayne.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Tommy, my brother passed away three and a half years ago of cancer. I want to see you eat some ice cream. I got a hundred.
Got to work, I need it. Commissioner Rogers.
Got your hundred coming.
One upping me, Commissioner Gilbert. I've, first one to offer him fifty dollars to donate. But hey, look, since sports betting is legal in Tennessee now, are we going to have odds on this? Because I need him to eat about twenty-five ice cream sandwiches, uh, to be able to beat Mayor Brooks. So that's kind of where we're, we're going here.
Well, I'm going to tell you this. I'm not getting into the bookmaking business. Let's make sure we report that accurately. I'm not involved. I'm just the ringmaster of this deal. But I will show you one last thing. Anybody ever watched wrestling before? My granny would have called it wrestling. Well, this is the belt that's going to go to the champion ice cream sandwich eater that day. That's pretty slick, isn't it? Tommy's already got his eyes, he, he tested it out before everybody else came in the room. So if you guys can help encourage him, I certainly would appreciate that. And thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank y'all for your time tonight. Yes, Commissioner. We've got, we've got Tenova Healthcare. They're going to be checking blood sugar and they're also bringing some kind of new equipment that does something about brain freezes. I don't know what, I'm not, I'm not into that, but something like that, yeah. Yes, sir.
If you get Tommy to eat a hundred dollars worth of ice cream, I'll buy it.
All right, we got it. We got another one.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request on May first, that's going to be a commission meeting room, that we have an ice cream party that day. It's the, the Monday after, the Monday after Commissioner Ledford has to eat all that ice cream and I'll, I'll bring in the ice cream.
Commissioner Rogers, you're my kind of man. I love that. Thank you all very much for your time and your support and allowing us to bring the Relay for Life to downtown Cleveland. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and joining us. All right. Uh, the next item, communication from the audience. Anyone, yes, please.
Deborah Gleason from Fourth District. I'd like to put my vote in for Peach Orchard Road. Has no fog lines and no reflectors on it. And if anybody's familiar with that road, it's way overdue. So I just want to put a vote in for that. I have a suggestion in regard to the tire situation. I don't know how you could do anything as far as getting enough, um, officers out there to make sure that they find somebody. But what about the recycling that you mentioned? That the road commissioner, the commission would pay X amount of dollars to anybody who brought in tires? Because what they did in Michigan was they used those and recycled them into the, well, no, not to mulch, but they put it into the repaving. So there, there's, there obviously is some sort of way of doing that where, I mean, and then you could find somebody if, after you're paying them to bring them to recycle and they're dumping, then, you know, yeah. I say throw the book at them. But anyway, that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? All right, uh, the announcements, Audit Committee, March the twenty-ninth at one thirty, Commission Room. Hotchlaw and Art, you all, April the first, noon to eight PM downtown. Finance Committee, April the third, eleven thirty, in the Commission Room.